We've probably had to do that again. So we can start off by, well, members of the public and members of the Comtesse Group who are here. And minutes of the last meeting, no comments on the minute, are we all happy with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we're taking the grade. Apologies for absence and substitute centre.
We have apologies from councillor Sam Prince, no substitutes.
Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest?
No.
No interest in substitutes?
Oh, okay.
Okay, any declaration of interest?
No, obviously, the committee just doesn't have any.
Well, then, if you look at the agenda, if you bother to read through them, I think it's okay. Any declaration of interest, chairman?
None, fully meeting.
Any questions from members of the public?
None, sorry.
Okay. As I said, we've got quite a big agenda this evening, but we'll try and get through it by about nine o'clock if we possibly can. But the first and important item is the budget, and I believe that Peter's going to take us through this. Go over to you, please, sir.
Thank you, chairman. So the general fund budget for 2018-19. So the report comes from the general fund and capital programme. And it's going to all four scrutiny committees for comment before it goes on to the executive. So the report started its journey in July last year when the medium term financial plan was refreshed, looking forward over the next three years. And we identified a shortfall of 2.7 million at that point. Most members have been...
The best, Jim, just saying, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sorry, I'll try.
From the point of view of webcast and another people around.
Apologies, chairman. So most members here are recognised having come to the seminars we had in the October time, where we went through most of the key issues and the risks that we were looking at in terms of the medium term plan. So through the rest of the autumn, we've worked through the budget for next year. And we're now presenting that in terms of the latest projections into the three year forecast, which is our next two of the report. So it's worth really turning that up so you can see what I'm talking about, so if you go through this.
That's the full version, isn't it?
Yes, it's this. Yeah, firstly, you guys get the big version. Get the little one, make the numbers smaller, it's a small shortfall. So it's really straightforward, lots of numbers and words on here, it's really straightforward. The top panel shows the latest budget position. So you can see from left to right that it starts 2018-19, that it takes us over through to 2021, and then a cumulative total. So it projects the change from the current year's budget, 2018. You can see where it says budget shortfall, one of the first totals there shows £790,000, which is the position where we've been looking at for this financial year. So you can see the second column in there. So the key item there is the inflation. So we were saying back in the summer it was 2.7, we're saying actually cumulative over three years, now it's 3.2 million that we're looking at. The biggest difference really is our inflation forecast being revised upwards. CPI is running at around 3% now. And it's likely to stay that way for a while. So additional to that, there's the Surrey County Council Waste Contract, which was the other big item that we were looking at through the autumn, which has been rescheduled over the three years, which has helped the 18-19 position. But overall, it's still quite a significant impact for the council over the three years. And also, there's the big £800,000 reduction there, which is the negative RSG. Government drawing back some of the grants, effectively halving the business rate realistically, which will happen in 2019-20. Now, there is going to be some consultation around that with the government over the next year. But as it stands, they will be taking that money back, we have no other better information than that. Which gives us quite significant budget pressure in 1920. You can see there, in the following year, it's sort of, we're looking for £1.49 million in terms of savings. So this next year, 18-19, you can see, first column is fairly balanced. But following year, we have some pressures. So the 18-19 shortfall shows £790,000, and that's before the council tax increase. And the proposed council tax increase has been assumed at the maximum allowable, which is 2.99%. That generates about £280,000 for us in additional income. We factored that in, so that left a shortfall for this coming year of £510,000. So you can see the next big part of the panel there says addressing the budget shortfall. Explains how we're going to balance the budget. Just looking at that, the first three items which run from left to right in terms of columns are savings targets that we're putting in place to find the money. So that's the initiative to balance the next three years, the amount of money that we'll be looking for. So the big item in there, you've got £250,000 coming from property. Effectively, it's been secured already. We've got two properties in Farnham, which will be coming on stream as far as revenue streams concerned during 18-19. And then there are other initiatives there, such as the benefit service reviews, released £70,000 worth of funding. Some other big numbers there, there's the planning fee increase of 20%, the government's put up on planning fees. But that actually balances out because there's some other spend coming in to be funded by that, which is what the agreement is with government. So where are we at there, top three lines? So effectively, really, for general fund budget, this is the picture. The report itself, paragraphs 15 and 16, just talk about how we're going to address the budget for the shortfall. Pretty straightforward, the heads of services will be challenged with, over the course of next year, coming up with initiatives to address the money that we're looking for. And the Ovi and scrutiny committees are being asked through the Valuable Money Committee initially to coordinate and work with the officers to scrutinise it, to be put forward, to finally save it. So that's pretty much for the, all the rest for the general fund, I'll not go into any further details, it's a matter to ask. So there's a capital programme, annex five.
Sorry, best, Jim, to get a question.
Sorry, we can go to question.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just wondered, are we not going to be part of a pilot scheme to get some money back from business rates? Or does that not figure in this year?
It doesn't figure in in next year's budget, because there's still a lot of negotiation to be done with county, the rest of the districts in Surrey around the pilot, and it's all the legal requirements to be sorted out still, which won't be in place to give us sufficient certainty to bring any money into the budget for next year. And also, it depends really on where the ratable values are across the whole borough. At the end of the next financial year, before you know with any certainty just how much growth we've actually got across the borough today to account for additional income. So at this point, it's a good thing to get into. Fingers crossed that you'll need to additional money, but not yet.
Change, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Peter? This negative government grant, which is obviously a big factor, it's only appearing in one year. What happens in the subsequent two years?
That's just the one-off taken out of our base budget.
Okay. So they're not going to do it in the two years after?
Well, yes, it does happen every year after that. So effectively, the way it works, we don't actually get any revenue grant anywhere from the government. But the government did guarantee us a few years back, under business rate retention, a baseline £2 million of business rate income. So this effectively is taking £800,000 of that away. So we'll get 1.2 rather than the 2 million going forward.
Okay. Well, it's just the way you're doing it, you're showing the change from year to year.
It's literally just a change, it's not the total value.
So that 100 will continue?
It continues, it comes out of the base from the previous year.
Okay, understand. Is there any other questions?
Chairman, please. Peter, can you help me to understand better the phrase 'systems thinking, review of benefits', dash staff saving? So it's that phrase before we get to staff saving, and then the second part of the question is, £70,000, is that all staff savings?
Okay, so systems thinking is a lean management, a lean process that is used. So it's a way of looking at the service from the customer's point of view and delivering the service in an efficient way that cuts out all the processes that are just not really adding any value to the end result. So it's a lean management process, which many of them out there, things like Six Sigma, and there's quite a few others. But systems thinking is a particular process that's applied to service industry rather than manufacturing industry. Lean management tends to be manufacturing industry, you walk through the manufacturing process and make it as lean as possible in terms of cost of production. Systems thinking is actually an application to a service industry where we have an administrative process, known as a system, and that's kind of where the terminology comes from. But effectively, it's just a way of looking at the service in a methodical way that allows us to redesign the service from the outside in. So we say, in the benefits case, we want to pay people's benefits as soon as possible, accurately, in a customer-friendly environment. So that people phone up and they get a response there, and then they're not waiting for 20 odd days to get the benefit paid. The £70,000 is entirely staff savings, so we've actually gone through a service redesign. And we've restructured the team, and the £70,000 is actually a couple of posts and they're no longer required, so.
So this approach has already been gone through?
It's effective, it's live. So we're just literally going into the rollout phase of the design now, which will be completed at the end of March. In terms of the money, the money's already been taken out of the budget for next year, so it's a genuine saving.
And £70,000 will equate to about three people, will it, or?
About that, yes, the full-time equivalent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me just comment again, Peter, I mean, unless you £100,000. It's trying to me as if you're racist that the government's doing this, not only taking away the support grant, but actually asking councils to pay them, in this case, the £100,000. And at the same time, expecting the services to be improved, giving the councils more things to do, and giving them, taking money away, you know?
I totally agree with you, chairman. What shall I say about it? Through the leader, we have been asking comment back to the government in terms of this. And the government's now saying that they will consult with us around that next year. So whatever that particularly means, we'll have to wait and see.
Without going into a long discussion, I spoke to the chief executive of Surrey about this. It was in relation to the withdrawal of the grant and the sheltered housing. And he actually said that the government doesn't care too much what councils think. What they care about is what the public thinks, actually. And his advice to all councils was stir up the general public and get them to start complaining. And I just passed that, and that was in the day before he retired, so your body feels wrong. He felt free to say that, so I think to do is just a bit to retire. But he gave that strong advice, he said, the MPs, they regard Surrey as a rich place. But although Surrey is a rich place, it doesn't mean the councils are rich. It doesn't mean the borough councils or the county councils are rich. In fact, they're generally not rich. And his advice was get your general public to write to the MPs and to write to the government. They want to hear notice of councils, they want to hear notice of council officers. It's only the people involved that matter. So I just saw that as a general, I don't know what Waverley should be doing about it, but I'm not sure that we get the story out to the general public about what's happened to the council in terms of all this going on, and I really don't think we do. And there isn't general public every day, is there? And there really ought to be. So that's my little hobby horse. I don't know if anyone else has got any comments, I think I'm wrong in what I'm saying.
I think Diana and I will do our best.
We've got two volunteers. Please do, please do.
So, chairman, just a couple of other pieces there, it's the capital programme, annex five. And you can see, the general fund's got a £2 million programme. Funding of that is a million pounds from the general fund revenue, and £800,000 across from external sources, and some other £200,000 of capital grants coming into that. And there's also fees and charges going forward for next year, we've put that through you as well, so just open to comment on those areas.
A very interesting check, a great deal of luck has obviously gone into all this. One thing that I found slightly difficult was actually, I couldn't see anywhere, maybe it's maybe not been picked up, where all the income from fees and charges is shown, you know? Not within newspapers, it's maybe shown somewhere else. And where our income from, you know, parking, car parking is shown and all that. A lot of information that can't be, that doesn't seem to be in newspapers.
Chairman, what we do is, we put the summary budget to you, so that you can focus on the key issues that go forward, rather than putting the huge amount of detail. But members are entitled then, and you're very welcome to ask anything around the detail of the budget. Contact us, and then the financing, we're all happy to talk you through any of the detail. It's just to keep the meeting focused.
I can see what you're doing, focusing on the changes and the actions you're taking, I can sort of see that, yes.
Am I able to ask a question?
Yeah, please do.
Well, I'm interested in a note about the new CIO, C I L role, funded from C I L receipts. Therefore, no income, it's going to be absolutely flat source of revenue, I can't quite believe. Have I understood this right?
Are you...
Yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not planning. I believe that with regard to the planning, although the fees have gone up by X percent, they aren't allowed to create surplus, so that the rolls are created from that increasing, so there is no impact on budget. Does that answer the question?
I'm not sure, well, it may be just the way.
No, it's fair enough, it says new role, funded from C I L receipts. So what we're saying is a cost neutral role, so we're implying somebody, but it's not generating a surplus. Hence, you're looking at the negative number sitting there, so the role effectively will be at best break even in terms of the budget position.
I know C I L is up to consultation at the moment, it doesn't go until about the end of the month. But it looks like fairly good charge on development of various sorts, including the sort of extension that I had in my own home a few years ago. So, you know, I can see it's quite penetrating.
I'm not sure actually if it's the extension, I think it's actually from new...
Yeah, it's from the...
Community. So the thing, sorry, chairman.
Anyway, what I, you know, I understood, it's for funding various support services, community...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yes, yes. So is that the reason why it shows naught?
So the reason it shows naught is because the silver money that comes in is actually capital money, and it's spent on capital, so all the projects are capital projects. It's just an element of the silver money is allowed to go forward to cover the administration silver. So hence why it's showing a break even position, it's only covering the admin costs.
Yeah, that's five percent.
We're not funding general fund.
Is it five percent of silver money? I believe it's five percent, I know that.
I'm just thinking, the current system is that we can keep five percent from monitoring, I'm not sure about the new silver.
Okay.
Chairman, sorry, one more. Just following on from this silver growth, that one-off cost, I presume that's for one consultant for one year, is that right?
Sorry, which bits are?
IT software, low out-staffing support, one-off cost.
It's literally just the implementation.
Sorry?
It's just literally the implementation cost. So it's one person for whoever that is employed for the duration of the project.
But it's additional to the current staffing, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, so it's like a consultant, you're going to do it from outside.
Or an IT company, in that respect, it's good work.
And everybody's confident that software being what it is, all will be accomplished all in a year, without any problems.
Well, that's what we say about it.
Thank you.
Anybody you want to say?
No, that's, that's our budget, over the question.
I think we have been asked to come up with any, let's say, bright ideas that we have to save money. I'm not sure we're going to do that right now, but if anybody's got anything, you'd be very welcome to put them forward to the finance function. As I say, my only bright idea is, you know, if we trust about this with the general public, and I'll probably go through that idea to the executives, that we should be publicising this, we shouldn't be taking this lying down.
Chairman, you can make that as a recommendation to the executive, a series for the government.
I think we should make that as a, as a committee agreed.
Yes.
We should, we should publicise what's going on and try and get the general public more involved in it. Okay.
So you can see how difficult a job we've got here.
Yes, exactly.
Mr Chairman, we had a similar problem before, when the council did battle with other Surrey councils, when it was a question of most of our rents being nicked and sent up north, and then we got landed with a nice big bill to service. But at least then we managed to get all the boroughs to work together. Whether we're going to have to do the same with this?
I'm sure all the other Surrey boroughs and districts are suffering in the same way.
Not all of them.
Not all of them?
Not all of them, no. It's not, not all districts have negative RSG.
How's that decided, Peter said?
I don't know how central government choose to dish out the negative RSG. They have a need-based formula that they use to do that. And there's the Fair Funding Review coming forward in a year's time or so, which is part of the negative RSG. There is the bigger issue within, which is a real issue for local government, especially with the adult social service pressures, cost pressures. But the overall funding pot that the RSG comes from, though, isn't especially so with the councils in England. And this is why we're beginning to see these quirks turn up in terms of giving some of the boroughs negative RSG.
Mr Chairman, I think they need to listen to our MP about our aging population, don't you?
He is now responsible for social care, isn't he?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's going to be interesting to see how he can take that responsibility on when it's being delivered largely by councils. Anyway.
Just wanted to make one observation, just in terms of interpreting some of the information here on that schedule of fees and charges, I think we saw it used in to some extent there. Yes, it's interesting to see how much each of those individual charges proposed to go up. Is it possible, perhaps, just have at the bottom of each page, just one line summary that says what the total income generated from the fees of those pages was for what it's proposed to be? And that just basically made a bit more sense. I'm sure there's some very interesting licenses there, but it's probably...
I have a copy here which has that information, it's just that we didn't complete the updating of this in time to put it into the circulation. But it will go out to council. It does make it interesting reading, when you see big increases amongst £50, you think, well, suddenly...
Exactly.
Anyone else want to make any points? Well, thank you very much, Mr President.
Oh, sorry now, for the ease of going on. Fees and charges, can we just look at page 27, please, chairman? When it comes to the annual charges for the supply committee agendas, per copy. Now, for me, that's to each individual person, £44, is that right?
We generated £250 from that in the last year, so...
So each one of these costs £44?
Yeah.
I would imagine it's a year's worth of like planning. That's why we're trying to...
It's an annual charge.
That helps to put it in the same text, like quantified.
But they're available free online, you don't, you don't buy them.
Childrens have to buy a bigger computer screen.
Well, I don't want to put the public off buying them, obviously you want the revenue. You can't get free, a bit of charge.
I would imagine, is it more businesses that buy them than individuals?
I don't really know who buys them, honestly, not many buy them. It's a point personally, but if they want us to print them, then it's a charge.
Mr Chairman, I think there's only one member in the public who sees them now. And the papers, they all get the link to agendas, so you no longer sign them.
Okay. Well, we're going to try and cover this from half past and achieving that, so if you press on now. I think it's over to Kelvin now to talk to us about service level agreements.
Sure, I'll show them. They came to work. Yeah, as you're aware, the council operates service level agreement funding arrangements with 12 voluntary organisations. And they all expire on the 31st March 2018. The current plan is to continue to protect the council's overall level of discretionary funding, which is allocated at £687,105 to the voluntary sector, despite significant reductions in Waverley's government funding, as Peter has just been talking about. Obviously, the purpose of this report is to consider the proposed levels of service level arrangements to the voluntary sector organisations, and also sort of taking into account the observations made by the community wellbeing subsidy, and pass comments on the proposed funding levels to the executive. The executive panel met on the 20th September to consider the proposed levels of funding. And the community wellbeing panel met on the 17th of October. And broadly, they were in overall agreement with the proposed levels of funding. And you can see the comments that have been made within the report. Annex one will obviously demonstrate the proposed levels of funding. What I will just explain to you within that is, we had a possible funding called the Waverley Voluntary Partnership Funding. And it was a two-part funding, and it was partly funded by Surrey County Council. And they wrote to us in September, October time last year, so that they would no longer be contributing that funding. And the aim, the decision is proposed to try and still fund the organisations who had been in receipt of that funding, particularly ones with the service level agreements. So there's a second spreadsheet which sort of demonstrates that, but it's not been given to any new organisations. It was to protect the funding that they had to deliver their services. And it was mainly around their extra care for older people within the day centre service. Just some highlights, really, two organisations that there's been some changes with since these proposed funding agreements were made is obviously the Orchard Club, that was originally based out of Hazleway in Hazlewood, moved last year. And during the year, they have now had their services be merged into AGK Surrey. So there was quite a lot of discussion about ensuring that there is some more finance funding towards the Hazlewood area that I'll be working with the executive panel on, and looking at options to what services could be funded within the Hazlewood area to... And it will be around the older population services. So it's sort of protected for now, and that would be looking at three year funding. But we were only, these changes only came into place on the 31st of December, the transfer went across on the 1st of January. So it's quite new, we haven't really had any kind of discussions around it. And then another... And then another, another highlight is the Clock House Day Centre was actually funded considerably less money than the other day centres. And what we're doing on a year-on-year basis is looking at reviewing their funding. But again, we've ring fenced nine thousand eight hundred, and that is to rebuild the partnership working over the next few years and for them to look at enhancing their services, particularly towards our more frail older people. So those are really the highlights, really your comments, and any observations you want to make to the executive.
More to ask here, sorry about that. Can I just say, Katie, bearing in mind that we are familiar with the fact that the Clock House were very resistant, and they felt they had good reasons to, working with us on the community meal service. And may I just offer congratulations, it clearly worked them around, and that is a very successful achievement.
I'd like to just point out, I'd like to just point out yourself and General Regent to speak.
Yes, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, I'm not quite sure what my status is, but I was told I could attend, and I met everyone, no, I never met. I wish to speak on this regarding the Orchard Club and so forth, it has been quite a change. I'm not sure what the Orchard Club is doing now, I'm not sure any of us are very sure. Their future appears to be a little questionable, maybe I should say no more than that. It was spawned out of all, it was called AGK, which was Age Concern. And I see now it's going to go back into the fold of AGK, which already hits a grant for us.
Yes, the Orchard Club as an organisation will no longer exist, we've been told. Well, it does no longer exist on the thirty-first.
I wonder if it was public.
Yeah, I think they're still doing some press around it. We're not, obviously, we've asked to see any press in advance, just so that we can make sure our comments match theirs. Because it's very much between these two organisations. It's what we will not be fun, so what has happened is that the service that they created from the Orchard Club, AGK Surrey is taking on that service. They have some funding remaining from their services, which they are transferring across to AGK Surrey to deliver that service, so they will not be in receipt of any funding from us. We fund AGK Surrey to deliver a different service, which is Waverley-wide. This service from the Orchard Club is a local-delivered service at the moment. So no decision has been made to give any extra funding to AGK Surrey to deliver the Hazelmeir service, which they've taken on, because there was funding remaining from the Orchard Club, which could deliver it for considerable time at the moment. So it's, we're kind of waiting to hear more. It's very new, and it was quite quick, the way it happened. We were expecting it to be nearer the end of March this year.
Can I put in a request for it to be considered as an alternative destination for the grant? One would hesitate to see our grant vanish or evaporate. That the Hazelway Community Centre, which is owned by Waverley, and which gets no grant at all, present from Waverley, and which is where the old people used to go to be serviced, if that's the right word, by the Orchard Club. And they still go there.
Yes.
They still eat there.
Yeah.
It's a lovely place. But, you know, it's missing a bit of income, I have no idea how much. It did receive from the Orchard Club, because it received money from it, from us. And I think it would be quite appropriate to redirect some, if not all, of that allocation and have the service level agreement with Hazelway.
Yeah.
Is that being actually pursued?
It's certainly something, I mean, as an officer, all we can do is recommend that to the executive members for them to consider. The Hazelway, I have to say, have been working very closely with us, because they took on the delivery of the community meal service for that area. They have been fantastic, amazing, they've really delivered a very, very good service on that. And they have found that, yes, they have, that whereas it was thought that maybe the old people who had used the Orchard Club service would follow the Orchard Club, they didn't, they remained in Hazelway, and they're developing services further. But I think that's something that, you know, certainly the executive panel can consider.
The customers are unlikely to follow the Orchard Club, because it's gone to three separate locations, High Lane Community Centre, which is miles away from anywhere, except if you live on High Lane, and Ralston House, again, the other end of Hazelmeir. One's not going to change the habits of life times of the increasing number of frail elderly who congregate at Hazelway. I just think it would be appropriate to go, I sometimes wonder if in these forums, was that fora? It's appropriate to make comparisons between the towns, but people do. Certainly our constituents, our residents do, and I get maimed at all the time at the absence of grants to people in places with organisations.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we're, are we forgotten about? I noticed that reasonable sums of money are given to similar places elsewhere in the borough.
Yeah, I mean, at one stage, one time, Hazelmeir, Hazel, the Orchard Club got the larger proportion of the grant funding because of the rental charge they were charged by the Hazelway, because obviously they weren't, and they weren't able to develop an income of their own through renting. So, you know, in previous years, you know, they have had, most probably if you're comparing more, but you can't compare like to like. We've been financially and grant funding supporting the community meal service with Hazelway, so they have been receiving some funding for that. I'd say it's not a decision, it means an officer can make, it's something that I can take back to our portfolio holder, well, Jim's here tonight, for grants, and obviously that's something that, you know, that he can sort of bring up for discussion. But, but yes, I mean, that need, you know, agree with.
Essentially, it seems to a lot of us in Hazelmeir that despite what the Orchard Club end up doing, and they do some useful things. I, as a digression, I organise a website of general interest in Hazelmeir, on Health, and we're supposed to put in a reference to the Orchard Club, and there's a link to their website. And if you follow that and look at the Orchard Club website, it just says the office is in the Waverley office in Hazelmeir, and that's it. It's not a peecers to what they do.
I think it was a very, you know, a very difficult time for them, and when they moved across, it didn't shape the way they had hoped and planned. And so obviously, they made connections with AGK Surrey for them to be able to deliver it. So I think now, from, really from now, is we can start looking at what funding should be.
Pardon me for banging on last comment, it's just like, what I was going to say, I think therefore, a lot of people in Hazelmeir would consider that Hazelway is a successor to the provision of those services, and it's very important.
If you can ensure that your comments go into the minutes then, and go forward to the executive.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, am I allowed to comment on another issue?
Quickly, because we haven't got too much time on the.
Okay, in a similar vein, there are some grants or service level agreements not here that have been there in the past, and which have been cut to zero in previous years, therefore, they don't appear. And again, I just want to make a general plea for fairness across the borough. Hazelmeir has a thriving educational museum, which is not like a museum of Hazelmeir, it's a kind of mini V and A, or a micro-V and A, shall we say, on everything for Hazelmeir, and it wins prizes all the time. It gets nothing from Waverley, it used to get a thousand a year, which is derisory. Similarly, Hazelmeir Hall, again, independent, run by trustees, quite a big hall, actually only independent one in the borough, I'm not sure. Quite successful, always struggling, needs a new boiler, needs a new roof, zero from Waverley. And our residents keep saying, why does this Godwin Museum curator pay for Waverley?
We know not a fund.
They even talk.
The town has taken it over, Mr. Chairman. Same as the town has taken over the toilets.
Does the town take over the, I'm sorry to be said, Dita, payment of the curator?
Yes, all moved over to Godwin Town.
Anyway, Farnham then. There's various places in Farnham which hoover up money. I'm sure they're very good, and I like Farnham as a town, although it's miles away. I just want to make a plea for fair treatment across the borough. Very difficult to compare, but the fact that Hazelmeir is too significant, there are three significant places. Hazelway we discussed, the Hall, the Museum, whatever happens, happens in those places. And the latter two get zero, it's not fair.
I think it's very fair that you represent your area as well as you're doing, and speak for them as well as you're doing. Let's make sure it's manifested and.
Please make sure it's made.
Yeah, I just going back on that, I'd just like to say that the, a big thank you to Orchard Club, they did an excellent job. And their future was, once they lost the premises at Hazelway, because they used to have the cafe, and it became very difficult for them. I was the rep on the, to the board of trustees for Waverley there, and I'm very sorry to see them go. I'd like to say thank you for all the work they've done, they've done an excellent job. And it looks like Hazelway are taking up the reins. And, you know, we'll try and get you to see Hazelway, discuss their needs and what they can deliver for us. And hopefully, we can work at it and see what we can come up with, we'll do our very best, that's all I can say.
Thank you, Jim. I think a beer wants to.
Just ask the Orchard Club, is it merged into AGK or?
It no longer exists, Orchard Club hasn't merged as such. What they've done is moved the service they have, AGK Surrey, have an allocation show, so, yeah, Orchard Club as an organisation, you know, no longer operate.
I think the best chairman might.
Just to point out that in here, unless I'm misunderstanding, it says you're putting twenty-six thousand towards Hazelmeir anyway.
Um, we've set it aside at the moment for the Hazelmeir area. We, you know, there's been no decision that it would go to Hazelway, but obviously, there is a discussions that can be had. But, yeah, it was for the Hazelmeir area, so that funding was ring fenced and wasn't lost for that area.
So our councillor round, can breathe easy, you are being looked after, don't you?
Well, thank you, councillor Wead, I was just trying to add my two pennies. Perhaps you're a bit in the way to direct the grant in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you, just an observation, the fund for the citizens advice Waverley, which is by far the biggest fund requirement, is that for their, a portion of their costing, you know, running of their organisation, or are we funding the whole thing?
No, it is, it's a significant proportion of the funding. Yes, I think we had worked it out, the Waverley funds about, I think it's about sixty-seven percent of it.
Following on what the chairman said, I'm sure that most of our party members out in the sticks think this is a free service. And I don't think they're aware that Waverley takes such a deep interest in it. Everybody I've spoken to that uses the facility, they're not aware where the funding comes from. And I think they think it's a free government service as far as they're concerned. And this, this points the way that it's not, and this is something we should really advertise the fact that it's their interest to be interested and make an effort to let the government know what they feel about it.
It's predominantly funded by them.
May I just continue, I notice that they are considering a cost-saving element in the forward programme. So there must have been a bit of overspending in the past that they hadn't controlled.
I think it's with everything that funding, other sources of funding are becoming increasingly more difficult to obtain, particularly revenue funding, which is what they need. So they are looking at ways of continuing to deliver their service, but looking at maybe that they don't need such premises with such high rents. And as any organisation, they're having to look at it so that they can continue to deliver a Waverley-wide service. But without the towns, they can contribute as well, the towns and parishes contribute significant funding as well as Waverley. So, yes, it's predominantly funded by, by local, the local authorities.
Thank you, it's just the large figure that they represent that caught my attention.
Yeah, it should be appropriate.
I think, can I just say, can I just, if you had a brief, because I might get into trouble by involving this meeting in this way, because strictly speaking, I'm not supposed to. I'm all in favour of involving the public as much as possible.
I was curious about the absence of reference to Relate Services. I'm wondering if this is a building's expenditure, perhaps that wouldn't apply, but Relate as an organisation has been funded by various councils.
Yeah, we've not particularly funded them in the past. What we have found, that we did a best value review a few years ago, and obviously, the more we open up to other organisations, it makes the pot smaller to the existing organisations we fund, who are already struggling. So we've not funded Relate in the past, and we haven't actually opened it up to any new organisations, because we recruit in threat the organisations that we're funding. So we've just not funded them in the past. But it is revenue funding, this is so that they can deliver their services, this isn't capital funding. This is very precious revenue funding, which is very hard to achieve now from other sources, if very necessary.
The fact that we're coming, I think it's very important that Waverley supports these voluntary organisations, because we're leveraging a lot of voluntary work for people.
Yes.
And it's rather ironic that the organisation that's benefiting from this is more Surrey than Waverley, actually. Because if we weren't doing this sort of thing, and the Sogsey Centre and the current organisations in Hazelmeir and so on, weren't doing what they do, Surrey would have to be doing a lot more. And it's ironic that Surrey withdrawn their forty odd thousand, and I think Waverley's to be congratulated for keeping the funding at the same level, actually. You know, despite Surrey having taken a hundred and forty, I don't know what's suffering, actually. The money must be coming from somewhere, Peter, to replace the Surrey money, and what else is suffering as a result?
So it's just funding certainly to fund the activity.
Okay.
I think we recognise, Waverley recognises the value of support in these organisations and how they can deliver a far more efficient service than something in-house. So it's worthwhile.
I mean, I can't even get the chance to meet Jeremy Hunt, and I did say to him, what's happening to David Cameron and Big Society? But we're all supposed to be supporting voluntary organisations, and it seems that, you know, government cutbacks are reducing our capability to do it. And Surrey, to be fair to Surrey, they didn't want to withdraw that money, they actually recognised it's a bad decision, which was the term they used to mean, but they feel they've got no choice. But somehow or other, we managed to overcome it here. So I think congratulations to Waverley for doing that. Okay, I think we should move on to the next slide. Oh, sorry, I've been asked if there's any conclusions or recommendations, we don't seem to have.
Comments you can't pay for them, yeah.
Yes. I would ask for the points I raised in the conference. Who controls this?
No, but I think we all would all agree that funding should be fair to the borough, and hopefully it is.
But fairness has got to be considered all the periods of tumbling, all the periods of tumbling.
Absolutely. No, I think we should say as a committee, we welcome what the executive have done in keeping the funding at the level they've done for the voluntary organisation. I think we should say as a committee, we truly support that, if we're all agreed. Right, thank you. Let's move on to the next slide. This is the service, service plans.
I'm just going to do an introduction, and then I think Kelvin will take you through the service plan. Just to remind members that service plans are, I think from an overview and scrutiny point of view, a really important document. It gives you the opportunity to see what the various service areas are doing in the coming year, and the priorities and objectives that they've got, that you could scrutinise through the year. And we will give you a sort of a six-month update halfway through the year and then the out term. I think many members will remember the joint ONS meetings we used to have every January. In the last two years, we had combined with the budget, and it meant that the focus. In the last two years we had combined with the budget and it, and it meant that the focus, the officers were asked to focus on the very top sort of five priorities in each area, which I felt did certainly service to both the services and to yourselves in understanding exactly what was going on in the year ahead. So we've reverted now back to full service plans coming to each of the O N Ss. Um, they're also slightly different news here in that Peter has asked all, um, heads of service to reflect a three year budget where, where appropriate. Some projects are obviously longer than one year, so where that is appropriate, you'll see those in the service plans. Um, and we obviously do have a draft corporate strategy. And at the moment there's a service put in where they can as new strategic themes. But, um, we will review those once the strategy is in place. So over to Calvin.
Thank you, Louise. Um, members, what you have in front of you on the service plans is those sort of objectives that are pertinent to this, this group. Um, so the first one you have in front of you is leisure centres and the maximisation of the usage and the service we offer. This follows on, well, from my O N S presentation at the last meeting where refurbishments have gone very well. Usage is continuing to increase. Um, and we want to continue that momentum, looking at potentially expanding our health and wellbeing offering to look at reaching different audiences, but also looking at further reinvestment in the leisure centres. And the three I, I talked about when I was here last, with Godoming, Farnham and Cranly, to see if we can increase usage again and the service we offer the residents. Um, my second one relates to the sort of, the two halls that sit within, um, Waverley's management. Um, we, the key element for you is the Memorial Hall site in Farnham, which, um, we're going for a major refurbishment at the moment. Its objective is to complete those works as soon as possible, to be honest, but, um, March, April. Um, and have the successful sort of transformation, moving of the services of the Gossery Centre and Waverley Training Services into the site. The objective of this, as we talked about, the three year plan, is obviously that is not to be a cost to the council, is to, is to break even over, over the next two years. With regard to, um, Godoming and the Borough Hall, we're looking to introduce the, um, live streaming of National Theatre and the Royal Oxford production, similar to what's offered at Hazelmere, Farnham and in Cranly. Um, um, looking at needs, we feel that would be a real sort of positive for the area and suit the residents of the Godoming area. So that's, again, looking to create a little bit of income. But one of our key objectives of the Borough Hall and our Memorial Hall upon completion of refurbishment is to really push them to celebrate the offering they have. The next one is, they're sort of similar, but is the care line service. So the care line service, sometimes the name is somewhat misleading, but that's our community alarms that we offer, um, to our elderly residents. It's a really well seen service. We have about nineteen hundred clients at present. Um, and as was alluded to earlier, we have an aging population in Waverley and we feel that there's an opportunity not only to increase the use of the community alarm dependent, but there's more technology coming forward that will be helpful to our residents to keep them at home longer and keep them safe. So it's, it's, it's a service we're looking to really invest some time in, looking at the technologies coming forward. Then we move on to Waverley Training Services, which, again, you had the pleasure of a presentation, um, last time just for Christmas. This is about helping young people back into work, education, um, looking at the, growing the apprenticeships, um, and also what we call the study programme, which is those young people that really need assistance when they, when they've left school to get into work. Now, the objective again, for, for every service really, it's, it's a non statutory service. This shouldn't be a, a cost to the council. This is, should be a, um, a surplus or a break even, um, service. And that's the objective of this, um, service plan going over the next few years. Then we have, um, the Bright Wells regeneration scheme. Um, obviously we're immediately moving to the next stage of this, um, project. Um, and my role and my team's role in that is to ensure the correct governance going forward, um, the bill programme in essence, to make sure that, um, an assist with section one over six deliveries with our planning colleagues and act as sort of, and our, my team will act as lead officers for that project. Then we move into what is lovingly called, um, the Heatham and Hub. Um, now this will take some explaining because this didn't appear last, appeared last year but wasn't delivered. Um, in French and Great Ponds, we have, um, well, fantastic, fantastic, uh, facility and attraction really that's, um, really well attended over some appearances. But what we, what we have at the moment is quite an aged building that just doesn't cope with the demand. There's not enough toilets, there's not a real sort of, um, area to eat and meat. Um, and also we have a, an archaic car park system where we have to have our seasonal rangers standing, charging, um, people that come to the site throughout the day. And it's, it's really time consumer, time consuming for them, stops them doing the work we want them to do. Um, and what we've been in the last year really is in the, we don't own the land, it's a national trust site. In negotiations with the national trust to come up with a scheme and a, um, design in essence for the hub that, that they're happy with. Now, we believe that will be, um, agreed this week because we've been working with them very closely. Um, and the key sense, because of the delays, because of that sort of consultation, I will need to go back to my executive to, to confirm that they are still committed to this project. But one hopes they will be and then we will move on from there. So that will be a long, a longer project to deliver. And then we move into one ni, is it mine actually?
No, I'm sorry, I meant to say that last. The last, the little, last little bit of this service plan presentation is actually an area of policy and governance, which is under the remit of this committee, which is under Robin Taylor, and it's just licensing. Um, and that's a business as usual element in his service plan, um, just to effectively licence pubs, carts and shops.
I'm, I'm obviously happy to answer any questions all them. Um, slightly again, where Louise's great introduction, I, I do obviously have some day to day operational service plans as well, but there would be quite a considerable number considering the breadth of my service. So you'll have a look at sort of the bigger projects here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Sorry, Calvin, sorry. I, I just wanted please, how, how are you hoping to generate income from the, the training?
So this is, um, so there's a, there's a levy now. So if you remember rightly, when we presented, it's quite a complicated process. So we're a lead, we're a lead provider, so we get funding from central government to deliver apprenticeships and study programmes to get people willing to work. We do that in, in-house and that, um, covers costs. And we also use, um, other organisations to deliver specific trainings such as, um, play workers or soccer skills, that sort of thing, to help, um, young people. So that's something that we have to do and there's a sort of a break even point with that. But what we have is a great opportunity with the levy. So the levy is, um, a charge upon all businesses that have a staff turnover in excess of three million per annum of naught point five percent. And that goes into a pot collected by, um, the lovely tax man, um, for them to use on apprenticeships. Um, and what Waverley Training Services, being a lead provider, one of the best, can deliver those apprenticeships for businesses. So that is where, and obviously, I'm just trying to put it in example, so one tutor, so one person can deliver circa thirty five apprenticeships. So that makes sense that we have, so there's a, there's a profit element to that. Although that not the prime objective, is to help as many people back to work and help them in the training.
Thank you.
And we, in the public sector is where we focus. So I think it's scheduled to come back at your next O N S. But our business plan looks at helping, uh, we're uniquely placed with the only, um, local authority with a training arm. So we can assist other Surrey boroughs and districts to deliver apprenticeships. And that's where we see the true growth and opportunity to make more money.
Yeah, I see. Um, regarding Frenchham.
Yes.
Are, uh, is the national trust able to help to get the pond clean so people can actually go in it?
It, well, the strange thing, uh, water quality is, is excellent. Um, and we have a nice blue flag that flew, that flies, but being a natural inland water, um, we don't treat it with chemicals. We don't do anything like that. So some things do happen and, and blue green algae appears at certain times of year where it's, um, conducive to growth. Now, we wouldn't obviously look to treat an open lake with chemicals. It's unfortunately just something that exists in, in that sort of environment.
We haven't found anything that enjoys eating, Louise.
No, there's, there are some treatments that we will continually try, but, um, Frenchham, um, Pond is essentially quite shallow. Um, so you could put, um, now this is where I'm a little bit out of my expertise, but, um, straw helps, um, reduce the growth of blue algae. But obviously if you consider amounts of straw, you raise the, the, the level of the bottom of the, of the pond, which would affect, um, our sailors, our harbour. Um, so it's, it's, it's quite a balance. Um, but yes, it's, it's a challenge, but please be assured if I'm on the, the camera, we have excellent waters. Water quality is just these things happen.
Those who uses it and they're all special need, so it would, would be safe if their special needs are doing yachting in there.
Yes, or, yes, so they do fantastic, the, the yacht club across there do a lot for the special needs.
Yeah, so if it wasn't safe, they wouldn't be taking their special needs.
They just don't want us to swim.
No, councillor Wead, he refers to, um.
It's not deep enough to swim.
There, there's, you can paddle and then if you imagine the yacht club, you don't want to be going into their areas where they're, um, sailing and the like. But there's an area, but it does get hit by occasional blue algae, which is.
A shame they can't be helped by.
No.
It's, uh, what you call hay, uh, mat which they use to, if they're spilling in the sea.
Um, again, I, I don't want to overstep my, my expertise. My rangers and backing at home are probably shouting at the screen at the moment, their head of service is making some sort of wild statement. I wouldn't like to comment. I know, I, I, I believe it has an impact on blue algae growth, I'm not sure about anything else.
The other thing is this, um, training.
Yes, Waverley Training Services.
Yes, and does it have school dropouts as well?
Yeah, what, um, what they're called is, um, the study programme. So, so we run probably a programme for between thirty and forty young people. Um, which in essence, the formal education system has somewhat failed them. Um, and it's, it's a, it's a process of getting their confidence up, their self-esteem and their qualifications to get them ready for, for work. And, you know, they, they can be quite challenging, but also they're, they're real successes when you, when you see after two years.
Yes, they are.
How great, you know, how they're in employment, they're working and, and they want to contribute, but it's just, it's a tough one.
I think, I remember last time when I spoke to you about, um, Farnham Mornings we were talking about. We put it on the board because as I was telling you, these are loads of schools have now become academies.
Yeah.
And they're using like, um, the Castle, Farnham Castle stuff. Bring them over here to have their meetings because all the academies have their meetings. And if we write to the schools from here to Fribourg and everything, so that we could use that budget as well. So they hire Farnham Castle, which is quite expensive. While Farnham Mornings, and as we were talking yesterday, our council offices could be used for that.
No, yeah, absolutely, sir.
Okay, I think Mike wants to.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Calvin, can I ask you about the Memorial Hall in Farnham?
You can.
Um, the completion date seems to be getting further and further away from us and I just.
Yes.
Two questions really, what, what seems to be the problem and is it costing us more money?
The, um, the key, um, challenge with the Memorial Hall, um, if you remember where the, um, the extended side is clad. Um, and unfortunate, there's far more unfortunate results of, of Grenfell. Um, but since the Grenfell disaster, um, cladding companies have a lot of work in and around London. Um, and what happened unfortunately to us and our contractor was the cladding company that had reserved the, to do our works, suddenly went, thank you very much, sir, um, but I can earn a lot more money elsewhere. Um, and then ensued quite a, now this is, I've become somewhat of a cladding expert over how it works, but, um, it was, it then became quite a contractual discussion because obviously they claimed to have done some work and between our contractor. And we were somewhat of a, um, frustrated bystander to this. So the, it's called a steny sort of cladding, steny board. It's imported into a, a wholesaler who cuts it to fit the specific project, this being Memorial Hall in this instance. The con, the con, the cladding contractor has ordered that in and has a contract with them so that it can't be just given to anyone else, they have an arrangement because they do a lot of cladding work with that wholesaler. So as soon as they walked from our site, they refused to cancel their arrangement with the wholesaler. So it became a period of time where we had to almost see out a contractual, um, issue with that. And it took eight weeks for that to be resolved. So that meant we couldn't, um, but basically cannot, we couldn't make the site watertight, which is impacted upon the project. So what's happened at the moment, I, I'd happily take you on a, on a tour, is we've got certain areas completed and then you walk out and then there's a, a whole hallway where there's no ceiling. Because the cladding has to connect the old building to new building, there needs to be an atrium put in. And the atrium couldn't go in until the cladding went in. So that is one of the elements and a key element that's created the delay. Um, the other element is the, um, additional work created by the Waverley Training Services element. So when we first tendered the project, we, we had a view that we, we weren't aware of the actual quantum of space going to be created downstairs and it was added into the project, but we didn't have detail of what was going to go in there. Um, and when you add a considerable sum of money, the contractors, you know, rightly says, well, hang on a minute. We tendered X, we're now delivering Y. And there was an original six week extent, agreed extension of time for that work. So that took them to sort of, um, end of November. And then we've got the cladding issue that kicked in from there. It's been a tremendous source of frustration, certainly for the project team and certainly for the executive who, who have made it very clear their desire and we are, um, putting huge amount of pressure on them. What I would say in, in sort of defence is the Gossery Centre still operate, so there's no impact on their services. The Waverley Training Services still operates, there's no impact upon them. And also, obviously the users that used to use the centre are currently, we've kept them informed that they aren't affected as well. With regard to cost, I knew there was another answer, I had to go back to you on. Absolutely, we were not, um, we are not responsible for the, for the cladding issue. We are not responsible for the delay. Inevitably, I imagine there will be some contractual discussions around that subject. But we have made it very clear to, to Armfield, the contractor, that that is their responsibility. And they, and to, that they have accepted that. But that, we will, we will be fighting that hard to make if there's any claim for them.
Are we reasonably happy that April will be the time?
Yes, strangely enough, we were waiting a very detailed, um, project plan this, I've been, for tomorrow morning. So I will see that, I have seen a draft. Um, and we are confident, but if, I'm, if you imagine, councillor, I sit here, um, slightly nervous about saying, yes, I'm a hundred percent certain because I've, I've been let down and had to feedback to my, my bosses that incorrect information. I think the key time for us to know certainty is when that cladding is watertight, which, um, is, um, mid to late February. So we are going there more daily, three days a week. I'm updating the executive regularly now, um, as I always have, but we are keeping the pressure on. But I would like to feedback to you on, and perhaps I'll, I'll commit to doing it. When I know there's watertight, we could, I know for certain then they're in complete control. There's a lot of people on site at the moment, but because you've got a, a cladding on the roof, all the scaffolding's up, which impacts upon the grounds, the external works. I'm going into a lot of detail, I do apologise, but until that scaffolding's down and the cladding's in, I, I wouldn't put my hand on my heart with certainty. Or I think it's a reasonable programme, but I want to see them deliver something in the next month.
So the timing of it is a very problem, that's what.
They, they've come back to us and said it will be, um, end of March moving in with a view to the first week of April. We've asked for greater detail and some key points so that we can assess the validity of that, of that programme. Because I'd like to assure all members that we have had programmes consistently given to us and challenged and they've let us down unfortunately.
I think Dennis and Bob, who was of question.
So I heard it's a long one.
You have a question.
Well, it's, it's Dennis first.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just an observation, Calvin, on the live streaming, which.
Oh, yes.
I completely, um, I feel that's rather inspired. Um, I mean, traditionally. Um, I mean traditionally and most of us still go to the venue where productions are taking place. And particularly if it's a distance away, it's getting more and more frustrating and difficult to get to that venue. You have to build in so much contingency time, if you're going by train, if you're going by road. And I think that if we can actually bring the production to the venue, I think that's first class. I didn't realise that this was happening elsewhere in the borough, but can I perhaps. Suggest that the principle of live streaming might be usable for the sheltered accommodations that we have. Where there's coming into play the reorganisation of the roles of the manager and the desire to use the common areas more fully. And I wondered whether, if this sort of facility could bring something that becomes local to many people as well as the residents, that's just a suggestion.
It, it's an interesting one, the National Theatre and the Royal Opera House are actually quite strict on where you can show these, they're very keen, so one of the. Before we could launch it in Gullum, they assessed a need and the fact it doesn't impact upon Farnham, Cranley, Guildford. Um, and Hayesmere, so they're very strict on the number of outlets that can show the live streaming. Now, I think there's certainly an opportunity to do something with regard to the communal areas. That perhaps isn't live streaming, but can use some of the Blu-ray videos, Blu-rays, DVDs we've got downstairs that we show on the cinema. Um, but the live streaming would be something we wouldn't be able to do because they're very strict on where, you know, and the populations it can hit.
Jim, may I do a wider?
Sorry?
May I bring a wider, a related question?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Are you probably aware that when the present facilities, digital facilities were set up in the Daryl Hall, it was done in close association with the Gulluming Film Society? Who provided both sort of moral support and financial support? Do you plan to involve them in these discussions?
Um, very good point, this is something we look to launch, but yes, they're quite key partners to us, um, the Gull, the Gulluming Film Society, so they're regular hires. And we use them, their expertise when things break, so yes, we would.
Good, because I mean there are technology implications for what you're proposing.
Yes.
And costly ones, isn't it?
Yes.
I'd like to drag you back to the apprenticeship and these children, the special needs now after all those buildings. I'm just wondering what kind of support you get in these schemes that you're running from the parents, because a lot of the indicators to be, seems to be that the parents are lacking in. Uh, assistance or even a directive and we're taking on some of their responsibility. Is there any kind of way we can involve them and get them involved in the care of their own children, rather than let the state do it all?
Um.
Or in this case, our account.
Certainly, certainly the, um, the families we deal with are very, are very, um, keen for their children to, um, contribute and, and. Really do something for society and, uh, when they come to us, there's almost a, a contractual arrangement on the study programme to some extent. Um, but, but please don't, don't think that, um, perhaps that where these children are and their educational needs is, is down to a lack of support from, from parents necessarily. That, you know, some do struggle with that, but it's, it's a multitude of reasons. Um, but in answer to your question, we would work very closely with the family, certainly on our study programme, certainly those, um, uh, children. That really needs a lot of help and we have additional support for those elements, we do additional work. But yeah, it is a partnership and we would be very strong with them if their child or, um. Is not committed to the, to the, to the study programme and doesn't attend, doesn't act in the appropriate way, then we will be very, um, strict. Because this is a service that's needed by a lot of people, but please don't feel it's, 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 sometimes it can be family support, but there are mult, there are a multitude of reasons and. A lot of these young people that join us, they, all they want to do is, is contribute and they just want to get the qualification, they want to get experience and they want to work and they want. They want everyone to be sort of proud of them, so it's, please, it's a, it's a contract, we work them closely, we've got much smaller groups, so it's one to ten. And it really helps these, these youngest people thrive, but we would expect parents to support.
Rather, it seems to me it's another extension of social services.
It, it depends how you look at it, but if, if someone can contribute and wants to contribute to society and we can help them get their education and there's funding to do that, I think is a very. Um, positive thing for society as a whole. But that's only my view.
Val, if you want to.
Yes, thank you, Kelvin, this is off piece, it's, it's, it's not in any of the papers.
Okay. I've already had tough ones from that end, I'm going to, I'm going to nail even more.
If I was to say to you, you host the leave centre and the regeneration of that, do you know anything about that?
Oh, if you had my colleague here earlier, Katie would know a lot more about.
So, so, so we, we are in the.
We're in conversation, um, I think the best link in, actually councillor Henry, I'll take your, your name and make sure my, my colleagues catch up with you. I'm not abreast of all my services, but yes. You know, it rings a bell, but it would be Katie and her team, probably Jane, that would work.
I'll, I'll, I'll speak with her then.
But please drop me an email and I'll, I'll make sure the appropriate people.
I will have a separate meeting with you regarding it, but, um, these special needs, you have the training for.
Mm-hmm.
Have we tried to involve, um, the secondary schools, sendcos and everything, because they could, they could help you a lot and they are volunteering around nowadays. In lively and friendly and those areas.
Absolutely, we're extremely well linked into those groups because a lot of our referrals will come from that and then, um, yes.
I mean, you were saying, um, that, um, the parents should be involved, the best way to involve the parents is through these sendcos in the schools and their secondary schools as well.
Yeah, okay, I think, well, we can discuss that programme.
If I could maybe bring up a couple of points.
Yes, please.
From attending the meetings at the sheltered housing, there was a lot of concern obviously about the manager's changing role as mentioned by Dennis. And this would seem to make the care line service a lot more important.
Yep.
And, and, you know, that's going to be the first course of call now, rather than the second one behind the manager. So I'm going to in some way beef up the care line service to, with more demand on it, it'd be more important and that. If it's not available, you know, people are, they're over dramatizing or something about people, you know, being dead on the floor and nobody. If you do, I mean, because at the moment the manager would walk around and check on everybody, that's not going to happen now.
Well, the first thing to remember, um, care line is not care, it's not a care service, it's not a replacement for, um, care. But yes, of course, we think, we see care line as, as very much an opportunity to support the sheltered services. And for, for yourself to know, the sheltered services manager is the care line manager, that we've brought the, um, the roles together, so. There is very much, um, a synergy between, um, those two services and David Brown, who's, who is that manager. Yeah, we see the extension of what care line and technology can offer can certainly assist with the sheltered housing units as well as a wider residence.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to come up, to bring up, there was a big point at our pre-meeting actually. And there's been a lot of national publicity recently about the Joe Cox report and, and people suffering from loneliness and particularly people with dementia. This doesn't appear in any of our reports and things, is there some way that we can bring a, a bigger profile and a bigger concern about that into what we do? Because it's really a big issue in a better way to look.
That's a, um, a very good point, councillor, when you bring, um, sort of key things, your view, obviously we've got the health and wellbeing, um, strategy and we do a lot of that. But that could be something that we could bring forward as a service and objective, absolutely.
The Prime Minister that might be talking about is one of our national objectives.
And there's, yes, we've put, and I think we have a role to play certainly in that loneliness objective, how we can reduce loneliness and isolation and. We have a lot of services, community meals we've touched on, care line, and we have others where, where we have an opportunity with our volunteers as well to produce, to produce that. So yeah, actually that could be something we bring in.
I think it's one thing that we would like to do, at least if the committee agrees, into recommendations to the executives at that.
Please.
That that agrees.
That older person wants to.
Are there any other recommendations or observations that, it's interesting, this, this section generates more.
Yes.
Discussion than anything else that we've spoken about. Um, is there any other specific things that any member would like to specifically bring forward to the, to the executive?
Well, what has been said has already been minuted, hasn't it?
Yes.
Are they separated out then for the executive as distinct from sort of just.
Well, I think we are, we are asked to make specific observations and recommendations other than just amendments. The amendments in basic tend to be fairly brief actually.
Yeah, we tend to make, um, observations and recommendations, so we separate that out into a separate report which goes on to the executive. So anything that the committee recommends or makes a strong observation, we note that down and that goes on to the executive department, exec papers. So now the time to make any exquisite points.
Definitely about loneliness.
Only on the expansion of live streaming or the principle of getting entertainment or even education to our protected housing or sheltered housing.
Yes, what Kelvin says, live streaming won't be possible, but alternative things.
Absolutely, we have quite a lot of Blu-rays that can be used and can enhance that service.
I mean, I think it's a very good service, having, having actually been to these, the ones in Farnham, I've met all of them, they're actually very good homes, they're very well run and the managers are excellent people. It's a real shame we're having to cut back on, on, on the financial support that they give them. Okay, I, I think the next item though is the performance manager report.
And. Thank you, Jim. My apologies, sir, not, not, not a popping who normally presents this report, I'll be here tonight, so I'm, I'm doing it on her behalf. Um, let us remember your June meeting that you agreed to do performance indicators by exception only. Um, so the one, um, the one performance indicator in the second quarter is off target by more than five percent, um, after the sixth performance of targets. It's the Farnham Leisure Centre visitor number, um, this is continuing to show a down the trend, I think it's come before you in the past, um, we've talked about it. That there's a massive number of competitors in four mile radius around the leisure centre. Um, interestingly, um, we were being told today, because we've got some information from Kelvin, that although the tenants' numbers are down. Um, the Farnham Leisure Centre contract brings in more, the biggest income out of any of the leisure centres, so, um, not necessarily. The fact that there are lower numbers is necessarily a bad thing or can be a bad thing, but Kelvin might want to say a bit more about that. Um, we're working very closely with Places for People, um, to maximise the use of the centre and to expand the services. We've got some details here of things that we're, that they're intending to do, including health and wellbeing initiatives, um, and installation of soft pay areas and that sort of climbing provision, which sounds exciting.
It does.
So, um, so they're trying to do something about it, but that is the one, um, that, that's, that's missing its target. I think as a consequence of this, the target has remained quite high for, for a while and it's at a hundred and forty thousand. I think officers would recommend to the committee that that is reduced now into a hundred and thirty thousand visits per quarter. Um, if you're agreeable to that, that's part of the recommendation. Further than that, I think, I think in the past when we looked at the indicators and we've reviewed them over the last sort of eighteen months to two years. Um, we've always found it perhaps not on the, the most satisfactory way of, um, or meaningful way of measuring leisure centres' performance on the number of visitors. And I think the officers from the leisure sector section would like to sort of have some time to review the, perhaps some better indicators for the leisure centres. And to report back to you in March if that's agreeable and that, that's another of the recommendations. Thank you.
Chairman, you know, um, I sit here and I, and I, yeah, I somewhat cringe when I hear Farnham Leisure Centre, downward trend, reduced targets. This is our high, we receive the highest management fee, this is still the highest usage of any of our leisure centres in, in the borough. Um, it is a very well, high performing centre. Um, this is, this report covers it well, there's a, within Farnham, there is a considerable number of competitors. You know, much more so, much more so than any other area, so, you know. Firstly, I just wanted to put the plea in, actually, it isn't, not performing, it is performing extremely well, it just has, um, a historic target that pre. Predated a certain number of, um, competitors coming into the area. Um, with regard to performance indicators going forward, you know, always happy to do the overall, um, sort of attendance, got no problem with that. But I do feel there's a, there's a greater detail that you as a scrutiny committee can really look at. It would be of more relevance, you know, be that the health and wellbeing classes are offered, be that children's swimming lessons, be that, um, you know. I don't know, squash players or whatever, there's, there's lots of things to look at that I think you miss out by just seeing a total number. We have an opportunity to bring forward relevant figures.
Why, why don't we have, um, what you call. Observation or something at the leisure centre, because I'm a regular user of Farnham Leisure Centre.
Ah.
With my kids as well.
Yeah.
So why don't we have, uh, what you call a display or some, uh, what you call.
What, so is it all a presentation?
Presentation at the site.
Yeah, yeah.
So to change, uh, I mean, Andy's from there as well, and if we have a presentation over there, then we could think about it, taking the target down.
We can do that or I can, um, ask PFP to come to here and they could perhaps give you some even more detailed information on all their, all their sites, because. I think I could put a map up of Farnham, councillor, and go, here's a competitor.
I used to play squash over there.
Yes.
And, uh, the squash area has been limited down.
Yes.
They have not been maintained, so I always drive twice a week to Guildford, Saturday Sports Park to play. So things are being ignored, but that target could be hit without, um, I mean, they have other fitness things which are going on. Than to finish squash, because squash is not earning that much, and I have a regular chat with the manager because I know him from the time he started working with them.
Yes. Squash is, is, is one of our biggest, and councillor Wheatley's, we all, is our biggest challenges and, and councillor Weller remembers as well. You know, um, squash, um, takes up a lot of space and generally has low usage.
Maintenance as well.
That, I'm not, obviously I'm not putting excuse for maintenance, don't get me wrong, if that's not the case, the two that are there. But you have to have a critical number of courts and space to make them viable, to run teams, to run, and when we went through the refurbishment. It's a tough decision, you go, do you keep two squash courts or introduce, um, a larger crash, uh, another studio and treatment rooms. That will get usage throughout the day through a lot, much, and deliver much more for the residents. Or keep squash courts, it's a tough, it's a tough challenge.
I think the bodywork dancing, weight losing, dancing is more than the squash.
Absolutely, one, I've been to Farnham, one ninety percent.
I've never been there, it's earning more money than the squash, I think.
Yes.
Things like that, if we remove squash and have more therapeutic areas and, and, uh, rock climbing, those kind of things, we could get more money out of it and more for toll.
You should run leisure centres, because that's, that's exactly it, you move from having a maximum of four people on a court for an hour to up to thirty people.
Yes.
You know, that is where you are and you can go two levels on a squash court, so you can have sixty and it's that sort of.
I mean, rock climbing and everything, we're earning us more money than having squash courts. And squash courts are all around us.
Yes.
Thinking of those kinds of things.
There's one doing something not very well, is there?
Yes, I mean, I've been going there for the last fifteen years since I've been here and I could see the changes.
If you've sort of veiled out now.
Yeah, and the rock climbing, if you go to Saturday Sports Park and other places, there are people waiting for, they're on waiting list. And I mean, if we convert those squash courts into that, we don't have squash, I think the average age of squash players over there is above fifty.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And they're most of the time, can't make it because of, um, their age and stuff, I mean, they are not fifteen, sixty. There's, there's no younger generation over there playing.
Soft play was, that seems to be a big thing these days.
Yeah.
My grandchildren go to Farborough for that, you know, so doing it in Far, offering that in Farborough would seem to be something that we should be thinking about.
Absolutely, that follows on from our presentation in. Absolutely, that follows on from our presentation in, must have been early December, I was a bit unwell then. But the reality is, yeah, there's niche areas and not similar to what you've suggested for climbing or soft play, increased cafe, that would really generate sort of a slightly different offering to the competitors, but also deliver what is needed and identify as a need. If you look at the indoor leisure facility strategy, it explains where there's a lack of a need and it projects into the future and certainly climbing, soft play is one. Squash is well actually serviced in and around the area and so it's quite an, well, I'll say it's an interesting read, but it certainly informs any investment we would have in the leisure centres. And certainly what you've commented on here would be certainly something we'd be looking at.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just to say I completely support Calvin and the officers' approach to have more meaningful data. Because it's clear in what we've been able to discuss now that this simplistic data is inadequate for us to get a proper understanding. And I think that's preferable to, as you're sort of saying, oh, we should reduce the target level because that psychologically imparts the wrong messaging, my friend. And the higher as people we aim, but we still fall short invariably, we will be at a higher level than if we set us a lower target and we still don't achieve. So I certainly support this aspect of more adequate data.
And I think it goes back, councillor Lee, to that you were part of the in-depth review that was carried out, you know, and I think there's some really meaningful data that was looked at then that you could be bringing forward because, as the dear's comment regarding the maintenance of the squash court as well, to some extent you would longer look about how we as a client are making sure that the contractors are delivering. So there's, you know, there's always that challenge. That's where we can make an influence to some extent, the number of users is a little bit out of our hands and we can perhaps show you how we focus on providing quality for our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wonder, please, if we have any information about doctors' referrals to the leisure centres and how that's going now, please?
And that's exactly one of the key, I think, the performance indicators that would be relevant. I don't have the figure to hand, but we count GP referrals, stroke rehabilitation, cancer rehabilitation, self-esteem, you know, there are a vast number. I've got all those figures, just not in front of me as we speak now, but I can certainly supply that to the group, absolutely.
Okay, how are they financed? Who would, if someone's referred to the leisure centre, how does that work? Especially if they're on benefits or something and they can't afford generally to pay?
There's sort of, there's sort of a two sort of strands. Generally, there's a reduced cost for using, so instead of having to join or be a member, there's this programme and it's a reduced cost. And I believe if they can't afford that cost, we have, oh, gosh, access to leisure card, it might be called something else now, but into.
It used to be into.
That's it, now it's access to leisure, that again gives that discount or free usage of certain areas. So, yeah, there's a mechanism for that to work. And also if we do health checks, the customer doesn't pay, but we receive payment from, I'm assuming it's the Public Health or NHS, because obviously one of the things that leisure centres have is lots of old men like myself who think I'm still fit and haven't been to the GP for a number of years, but you actually, you know, I should be checked on getting to that age. And there's opportunity, you know, and you can preventative, if you have an MOT, exactly that. And that's carried out at the leisure centres. So it doesn't mean I have to go to a GP when there's GP surgery and for that they get recompensed. And it picks up, you know, quite a considerable amount of issues for, to stop that preventative element or early sort of recognition. So I do have those figures, councillor, but I don't have them to hand now.
Could we put that as a recommendation, please, therefore that I get, thank you very much.
Our presentation would be, as I was saying, would be better, separate presentation.
Yeah, I think maybe, I'm going to say that, keen to come and explain.
Send part of it, wouldn't it?
Oh, absolutely.
I just wonder if there's some way in which we could, then the Farnham Leisure Centre is well known and well respected and Farnham, as you say, there's an awful lot of competitors. And can we, the profile of the leisure centre in some way, I don't know quite how. Maybe by having things in GP surgeries and boards and the Farnham Hospital and other places.
Absolutely, and I think, I think if the team come and present, I think you'll find they, we do a huge amount of outreach, walks in health and how we get into GP surgeries. But they're a tremendous difficult group to get into as well because they're separate sort of, well, separate businesses to some extent. So we do a lot of work with the CCGs to sort of impart knowledge, but let me get them here. There's a lady who leads it for them on the health and wellbeing, a lady called Gemma, who can certainly explain everything they're doing and will take on obviously any guidance you've got.
Perhaps you could invite the manager as well, he would help and what he would like to invest and what he thinks. The managers and the area manager as well. I mean, like, simple thing, Rocher has me taken to David Lloyd's instead of coming to Farnham Leisure Centre, which is a talk to council thing which started by a bad force.
Yeah.
I think we've got nerve field, we've got this, David Lloyd's, we've got right across the leisure centre gym as well.
Yeah, anytime, gym twenty-four hours.
So hard to make it attractive going this way instead of going those four places. So we have to work it out instead of getting the targets down.
I'll just relate to ask a question then. Public health, public health.
Yeah, go for it, probably does, but I'm doing my utmost.
Just going back on the referral, on the referrals. I'd be interested to know if it's possible to get the data. It might involve working with CCGs on getting some information as to what people are being referred to because it's quite understandable why people get referred to a leisure centre. Or it might not be, one might be for losing weight.
Yeah.
But people get referred to various different classes or activities for various reasons.
Absolutely.
And one of the things we found in a previous review of the different councils was the GPs in the area, the ones that knew the area very well and had worked there for many years, referred people on to various different community organisations within, you know, the city. But the locums that we found were generally referring people, you know, the medicines and the general kind of traditional method that GPs use to get people better. So I guess the question is really on, do we know the full extent of the support that's out there in the community? And are GPs referring, referring to, is it possible to get that data with public health?
Let's take, I believe it is, certainly social prescribing. I think we're mentioning the social prescribing and realising that sometimes it's not best to get a couple of pills, it's best to do something else.
Or a combination.
Or a combination and what we can do. So I think we certainly, let me check, but I believe there's information on what GPs are referring, are referring and which ones aren't? What types they're referring to?
I'm not too sure whether there's a set guide, but as you mentioned, social prescribing is something that is generally increasing among the health professions. And it's generally the newer doctors that are more taking that kind of method up. And I think as more evidence emerges, the more strong case for it. And I think that's where the difficulty lies because it's a new concept and generally in the medical world, evidence goes a long way.
Yes.
And I think that's one of the weaknesses of the social prescribing model.
And what I would say though, and I've seen the praises of the Farnham and Norsey and CCG, they were part of the vanguard sort of projects from the NHS, which is about bringing forward ideas such as that. And they have been at the forefront of a social prescribing model in the Farnham area. So it will certainly be something to bring up. I don't think that exists as strongly within the Gilgan and Waverley system.
There's another idea, like the Farnborough Leisure Centre has perfect restaurant. People just go for the restaurant over there because it's got cooked meals and hot meals and everything.
Is that a council one there? Is that a council one?
Yeah, the Farnborough one. It has full hot meals and everything, while our cafeteria keeps quiet.
Well, it's one of, truth be known, cafes are one of the key areas for a leisure centre and health centre to run. Yeah, because it's a place where people can meet, talk, socialise. It's become ever more critical to a successful leisure provision. With regard to Farnham specifically, that was somewhat squeezed in.
An hog solution, you could say.
Sorry?
It's a ad hoc solution for the cafeteria.
So, and that was quite a last minute where we squeezed the reception. I'm going back, I was part of that, 2011 squeezed reception desk to get in a sort of cafe area. It needs to view the pool because that's ideal for parents watching their young to swim. But also if you want to have a good provision, needs to be large and a bit more, a bit more or less of a thoroughfare and a bit of a cafe.
It's making a much money there.
No, but it was certainly something they committed to improving the management fee to Waverley via the introduction of that. And any future investment, when I bring it back to you, will no doubt involve an improved cafe area. If you look at Golding, it's central to where you walk in, what you see, where it is. Again, Hazlemead, we base it around the soft play as well. The latter ones, we've been able to really improve the.
I was with the mayor of Rashmore and she invited me, let's go over to Farnborough and Glacier Centre and have coffee with it. And it's like, they have hot meals and everything, you can order anything. The mayor recommending it to go in there, it was serving it well as well.
I think we should maybe move on because we've got an important item to do, which is that strategy. But in terms of recommendations here, there seems to be concern about reducing the number. But there's two parts, there's also agreeing in view of the indicators. Perhaps the two things happen at the same time. If we're going to have different indicators, is that the time to think about possibly changing the number rather than agreeing separately to reduce the number? I think you were particularly concerned then is that we didn't just arbitrarily reduce the number.
No, that's right. We could do that next time, for example, we're still getting it to grow. I think the key thing is the change in data, so we get meaningful data, you know, represent what's happening.
I think we should review how we measure the leisure centres in terms of indicators overall rather than just this simple number. Because you're actually right, Calvin, nobody's saying, nobody thinks that the leisure centre is not successful. Just because, you know.
But we sit here and it's sort of discussed in a negative connotation because of, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So can we make that part of an overall review of the indicator value, just to absolutely use the numbers? Okay.
Can I just add an affirmation? You talked about GP referrals to leisure centres. I wonder to what extent, Royal Surrey, for instance, makes referrals. I don't know to what extent their gym and rehabilitation services is now under pressure. I wasn't referred when I fractured my spine from the NHS, from the Royal Surrey to anywhere. And yet principally I'd used their gym for rehabilitation. I'm just wondering what the state of their gym is now, whether it's full with ALE people.
It's an interesting conversation because there should be a referral link, certainly for that sort of injury or operation to leisure. But councillor, one of our councillors who suffered a heart attack wasn't referred to his Farnham site, he was referred to another site from Frimley Hospital and it was quite frustrating. It's, it's.
Because Frimley isn't.
It's a constant, like everything, there's a constant churn of people at the hospitals, there's a constant churn of information flow. But you're right, that does happen as well because certainly on, you know, GPs wouldn't refer on cancer rehab or cardiac rehab, those will come from the hospitals. But there's certainly sometimes a gap.
But you'd be asking, but they're not, they may really are, they love a good Farnham hospital.
Correct, yes, so he got sent quite a way away, it was quite disappointing.
Okay, let's move on to the preventive strategy. I think this is good.
Yes, I'm somewhat presenting this on behalf of my colleague Andrew Smith, who's with the safeguarding league now. This is obviously, PREVENT, for those that you don't know, is part of the Counter Terrorism Security Act 2015. This is part of a national agenda. And what it is, is about the statutory order responsibilities that sit with the Borough Council. So this is about basically awareness, looking at sort of key triggers that may have individuals that are subjected to radicalisation and understand some of those points. So this is us really making it clear where Waverley's role is in regard to the PREVENT strategy. So PREVENT, the objects in front of you, they love a little acronym, but this is about, this is part of forward, essentially, so it's pursue, protect, prepare, prepare, prevent. So this is about preventing terrorism and people being radicalised and what role we have. And we feel, while I talk with my colleague Andrew Smith, it's a safeguarding concern. So we would report any person we feel who we note, be it from our, I don't know, council tenants, when we're on a tenancy estate visit, if we feel there's issues, we've been reported through our safeguarding processes. So I'm hoping the report is clear, but I will do my utmost to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I just wondered where we stand as members of the public in this. I had a weird experience Friday evening when I was selling Golos round the pub, you know, Golding lottery tickets. And a young man came up to me and he said, I wouldn't buy one on principle. I said, oh, why? He said, you, as you say, you help the various organisations around the town, the local voluntary groups that need help. You're doing the job that the government should be doing, which is spending all these billions, giving money to the middle easterners and rubbish. And he was going on and on and I thought, oh dear, and you've got the bit here about being dissatisfied with government and believing that only they know the truth about what's going on. I thought, oh my goodness me, he absolutely fits into that little bracket. But, I mean, I wasn't going to get into any great dingol with him, but what does one do?
Well, that's absolutely, I would say, look at annex three and page 106, but the reality is those sort of things, you should phone into 101.
Really?
Absolutely, absolutely, because, and you will, if, they will put you forward to the preventing.
I don't know the chap's name.
No?
I have no point of contact with him other than that one little bracket.
But if you have that, it's like safeguarding, you know, sometimes if these things don't feel right, even if it's a small element, someone else might know and report it in and there's a link. So, yeah, those sort of things, I don't think there's any concern with going through the police at 101. We had, we had some, one of our WAB trainers was a student where I almost dismissed it when my colleague spoke to me. We phoned up, we were put through to 101, they went, yep, we're aware of that person, thank you very much. You know, and it was the smallest thing. And I almost said to my colleague, you know, we don't want to bother the police with that. Instant, knew the person, knew who we talked about.
Could I add something in there? There are, for these kind of things, there are small courses, like a day's course for a few hours for teachers as well. So they are made of that. Perhaps there should be a one for functions.
Yeah, I think that's a very good suggestion.
Could do that and we will be aware about these things.
And the police would be happy to come out and present.
And it should be done in the council chamber for all the councillors, one or two days. And it's an hour's course or nothing else, Rashida's done it. So it would make us more aware and answer what we want to and where we need to call and how to approach it. Even they are done with the small family school.
Yes, I've done it through teachers, even governing bodies and things.
Yes. It should be open even for public.
That's one of our recommendations.
I'm just a viewer there.
Ross?
Yeah, I was just going to make the observation, in terms of what's written down there, find no particular issue with that. I suppose the question I come at it from is in the overall summary there, we do have something that has financial implications. There are no financial implications. Well, we've been talking about training courses, presuming that's financial implication. We presume you're talking about use of officer time, which again is a hidden financial implication. And I think as a general observation, I think this is true of quite a lot of the strategy papers we see at these meeting meetings, that there is no brief statement given there about where we're doing strategy document, exactly what commitment of officer time that has to it and what usage cost that has to it. Now, maybe by looking through the budgetary paper, we can gain view of that. But for me personally, I would quite like when we're seeing strategy documents like this, to gain some understanding of how much of our officer time we are committed. to gain some understanding of how much of our officer time we are committed to that and whether there's a cash cost and the training cost, what that. That just raises a general observation on any of these strategy planning papers because if we're going to make decisions about where we spend best use of resources time, that this may be a perfectly valid point to go on, but if you don't know what this is doing here.
That's understandable, I mean, Calvin, we've got no choice but to do this, this is something very bright to do.
No, absolutely.
To, are we going to get any support, financial support for doing it?
No, absolutely, that's the thing, it's quite useful for us to understand if we're being asked to do something, what what that takes away from what we can do. We don't know what this is doing, that's very hard to reach.
That's a good point.
There is a um, a prevent implementation plan.
Yep.
Um, which sets out some of those queries, I believe it says, and they're um under the head of finance and shore organisations working with the local authority and location, it continues that thirty compile audit to be carried out with a following and to be implemented and goes on. So it is included to some extent, but I understand your point on.
I think it's just on, I think I say it's not just on this strategy paper, but on the other ones, we said we very rarely have any brief plan, one or two lines that says this will use X hours of officer's time, this will involve X amount of cash cost. And I think that to me would have been useful in particular bearing in mind the budgetary constraints, everything else we were talking about earlier on.
Is this document very similar to documents, is there a model for this type of document? Calvin, is that entirely their own work, so to speak?
No.
It strikes me as a good, well-written document.
Yeah, it is, it, there's, there are certainly um, it's quite strong guidance from the police and what needs to be in there. And this would be modeled on, we work, there's a community safety sort of team across the county that liaises. So this will be consistent with what you would see in Guildford. Because the idea is to 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 learn from each other, to make it as understandable as possible. That's why the flow chart I referred to, council, we need, probably should, is something we need to get out into any training. You know, if you have a concern, one O one, don't hesitate really.
I do think a session for councillors would be very useful, actually.
It is quite, I mean, I sat with Rashida and she was standing there, it's quite eye opening. Plus we go in different areas from here to Farnham, we should be aware of that. I mean, perhaps we are going to guide somebody else who comes to live or life to tell them this is what is, I mean, it's not, but it's necessity of the time. Even primary school teachers aren't given that course.
Okay, any other?
I mean, I'll give you an example, this boy misspelt that um I'm living with what for? Extremists or something like that, and he had just written it. So it had to go to the head teacher, from head teacher it had to go to the police station. And um, he had, he was writing something else and he missed it. And he was there like year two, good child. And um, they had to check it through. So these are small things which we foresee right now, but we will see that that small thing happens throughout.
Okay. You got the recommendation?
Yeah, um, just one more quick one for myself. Um, one is just, I'm really glad how this report was written because I find it incredibly interesting on how it goes through, um, you know, spotting of science, I think that's really well done. And I guess, I guess my question's more of a acting as member of the public. I mean, how do we distinguish between what we perceive to be someone who, um, I need to get this phrase right, is in distress or having a troubled time and then believing that relates to a risk to, you know, um, the public in terms of terrorism?
Uh, and I think that's why we need to view it, sort of radicalisation in that's, in that safeguarding sort of world. It's, you know, that that person is 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 being preyed upon, to be honest with you there. You know, and the fact that they don't do something horrific, that they've been preyed on because someone's exploited that. So it's sort of just raises real safeguarding concern. We tried to get it across and I'm sure Andrew did, not being here. You can never report too much, you know, if you look, we've, I've sit on serious case reviews, I've sat on domestic homicide reviews and the same things come out again, that this person knew something and didn't fear that was important or didn't bring it across. So it's, it's to some extent, what I'm probably saying is it, you don't need to make that judgment. You know, there there isn't, you know, with the safeguarding or, this isn't going to send the heavy police in, they're not going to sort of turn this person out of their home. It it, there there's a, there's a process that will recognise that and you go, oh. You know, Emma, Emma told us from the council, you know, it's, it's discreet, it's dealt with. And my experience, and it is a personal experience, you know, they wouldn't have even known that there was anything referred to from WAVE training services at the time, one I was involved with. So it's a difficult one, but don't make a judgment if, it's the same as safeguard. If it doesn't feel, if something doesn't feel quite right, there probably, there's probably something not quite right. And just happening, you know, every little bit counts. But I've sat on several reviews and it's always the same. Generally from my organisations, not individuals, don't get me wrong, but they haven't communicated and someone has not thought that that was serious enough. And it's been missed.
No, I remember it was terrorist house, I live in terrorist house, he lived, wrote, I live in terrorist house. The year two child. So everything, the council and everything was involved, just for a small thing.
Absolutely, and we were talking about the WAVE training service not to sort of detract it, but we do hot topics in discussion about what it is and what it's about. But they will say, you know, there will be comments like that and generally be them right wing. There's a, you know, that's, you know, all of it's the same if it's inappropriate language, like that. You have to take them aside, check it out, really look at it. But year two is interesting, you know, how you know the words.
He misspelled it, probably. He was supposed to write terrorist house.
I would like terrorists as opposed to terrorists. Yeah, I'd be like, where are my year two signs?
Presumably, presumably the system cannot be abused. I'm just thinking, I've come at it from the other attitude with vindictive neighbours and other people that are in this world to upset, for the sake of upsetting. Um, we've kind of triggered off something that is going to be readily acceptable and.
Which one?
Discrimination seems to be the requirement rather than immediate action.
On that sense, all I would say is, you know, again, it's about a judgment, you, you know, obviously you will make the judgment your own yourself, but the reality is, it won't be dealt with in isolation, it will go to a multi-agency group. If this has been a consistent complaint and in that example, we rest assured, we're aware of them. So in the community safety team, we have a joint action group which isolates areas that have been brought up as issues. And there is another group that looks at individuals and you, and you can see an overlap. So generally, it's not on all cases, sounds we don't get them wrong, but generally there's an awareness if it's, if it's sort of people trying to sort of just report something because they want to.
I only, I only say that because I have a knowledge of the status, the extreme, but that was the same kind of situation when neighbours reporting on neighbours.
Yeah.
Yes, we seem to be setting up a similar organisation now. I realise the seriousness of the problem, but I'm more worried about the safeguards in that problem.
But that of course opens up your mind instead of having it with the focus on what for one thing, it opens up your mind. So you can look around, um, what you're looking at and what they are thinking. So yeah, I mean, this is part of the ghost, this this wording and everything. And then you're much safer, your mind opens up if you don't have the blinkers like right now, most of us would have on this situation.
We could spend hours discussing it, because it's a difficult issue.
It is a very difficult, it is.
Get the balance between protecting people and.
The accepted form and the unacceptable form.
Absolutely. I think we need to move on, because we're fascinated a lot with what has targeted there. An update from the, in the Coursy Working Group, that's actually been a very interesting, very interesting project. And we've got one more meeting to do and then we're doing a reporting of a report. And Alex has done a terrific job in organising it all, so it's best if he explains us where we are.
Thank you, Jen. Um, so just to update the members that aren't on the task group, as councillor MacLeod said, we've met four times and we're due to meet twice. Um, the final session will be on looking at access to health and social care services, so we'll be getting someone in from the CCG and more health and social care partners just to talk about how people are actually getting into the system. Um, so just to remind members what the group's actually doing, so we're looking at health inequalities in its broader sense. And so this is looking at the wider determinants of health. So this is things like our surroundings, how we live in, our diet and essentially how we live our lives. Um, and this all falls within the remit of the district council. So I believe there's a statistic which is, some eighty percent of everything that affects our health falls within our responsibility. And twenty percent is within um, primary care slash the NHS. So what the group has looked at so far is planning policy. We had the fantastic opportunity, um, I think it was last week, to work with some of our planners on some of the draft local plan, um, part two, um, more detailed policies. So we went through with public health and made some explicit policy recommendations on that side of things. And we've examined the effect of housing conditions um on people's health. Uh, and we've looked at lifestyle behaviours which include a range of tobacco, alcohol, drug misuse and children's health and obesity. And that last one's quite explicit, this was obesity and the link between children aged between six and seven and eleven to twelve was something explicitly brought up by public health. And it was one of their key targets and it was quite, actually quite astonishing as to what we perceive as a healthy weight and what we've got used to as being the norm. But there'll be more about that in the final report. So the group are due to meet one more final time to hear evidence, which will be on the sixth of February. Um, and then it'll be myself writing, or probably be a thesis, and by the end of this, which will be coming along with the March meeting. Um, so on a, on a side note, and councillor MacLeod's already mentioned a little bit about this. Um, last week, the um, the Joe Cox Commission published a re- um, a report regarding loneliness and social isolation to which the government responded in creating a post which is called the Loneliness Minister, which sounds quite sad, but it's all for good cause. Um, and we've probably already mentioned this as well, but Waverley does have one of the highest proportions of over eighty fives and I think it's one of the highest in Surrey. And alongside dementia being um, an issue in the group, the task group's already made explicit recommendations to planning policy on dementia. But I would like to echo what councillor MacLeod said, not just in the service plans, but what I'd like to propose is from the March meeting, to have an item on loneliness within Waverley and the effect that has on mental health. Now, I've spoken to some of my colleagues in public health and floated that idea past them and they, they said this sounded like a great idea. So if members would support that idea and we're delivering that with some of our health colleagues, and I'll speak to Calvin as well, see what dates we've got on on loneliness within Waverley, but from what, from our indicative findings in the task group, it is rather high.
Hmm.
Um, but it'd be interesting for you as members just to see a little bit more about what goes on within Waverley and what our residents are actually feeling like. And then look at what um, task group's done and how we can start to tackle some of those issues. And we talked about it a little bit in the service level agreements because a lot of what they they do is will be impacting on the health and wellbeing of all of the service users. And we shouldn't underestimate that and the importance of Waverley training services. But there is much more that we could be doing as a council to be benefiting our residents' mental health as well.
Okay, I, I echo, I think it's a very important subject. Um, but also, we did a lot of work um, with systems leadership and we looked at um sort of Waverley cares and what we do as a council, it now is somewhat, probably a year old now, but there was, we carried out a film on that to demonstrate, because Waverley's doing quite a lot on this subject already. And I wondered if it was, if you considered with the councillors that perhaps that could, perhaps start, we could have a bit of a play that, it's only about five minutes at the start, so you have an indication of what Waverley already is doing to support loneliness. Just, it's, it's a five, five, six minute film, it's fantastic, it demonstrates what Waverley, a borough district can do.
That's useful.
Yeah, we can conclude that.
Is that okay?
Yeah. What do members think? Would you like to say something on?
Mr. Chen, does that fit into the next point about the programme, future programme?
Yes, there's quite a few reviews to review here, um.
Um, if we just go, if I can just guide you through.
Yeah, please, please.
If you can find it.
Start page one nine.
Hundred and nine, yeah. Hundred and twenty six.
So I'll just take members through what's coming up for March. Um, the first item we've got is an update on the leisure centre contract management. So this was a scrutiny review report which came to scrutiny back in June. Um, that was presented by councillor Seaborn and councillor Ramsdale.
Hmm.
So it's good practice in scrutiny to get an update on the state of the recommendations. So it would be good to get um, the portfolio leader for this area, which would be Jenny Els, I believe, along with officers. If you can get a progress, check on, on this, and Fatima's already emailed me about that, so I'm confident that will be coming. Um, as I've mentioned, you'll be receiving the Health Inequalities Task Group Review Report. So we're setting up the findings and recommendations that we've um, made throughout the last six months. So we'll be asking the committee to endorse those recommendations. Um, from again, what I've just mentioned, we could tie that piece of work into a larger piece on loneliness and mental health and we can conclude the Waverley cares by tomorrow and that should um, be a nice way to end the scrutiny cycle because it ends in March and then we start again in June. And the other point I want to raise, um, I'm not too sure about the status, Calvin, honestly, if you can help, on Memorial Hall.
Yep.
Um, I understood in the service plans that there was a, I might be reading this wrong, there was a draft going to exec? Or that might be something else?
On Memorial Hall?
Maybe, or maybe not.
I don't believe so, I don't know, is there something, is there something coming here?
I must have you, I mean, I've got in my forward plan, March, question mark, I've also got September, question mark. I can't, I wasn't at the agenda setting briefing for this, members, do you remember?
Coming back to both councillors, I was probably here as a celebration of the opening, that's probably what I was planning to do on March. I could certainly, it, it may be worth me worthwhile giving a, perhaps an update on the Memorial.
If, if it's appropriate, I think what Emma's just told me is it's not opening till.
End of March is what we're hoping for.
It would be, I guess my only question would be, would it be worthwhile of the scrutiny committee looking at it at a later time, rather than just looking at it at the same?
I think, I think what would be important is the, is scrutiny, look at how the centre performs going forward. Because obviously this is about um, increasing the usage of an underused um, facility. It's about the success of the Gosbury daycare, we want that to succeed and flourish. And WAVE training, so I think there's a key sort of scrutiny element of how the centre performs, the whole performance points open, definitely.
So we could put that in?
I would have thought it would be later, like, so we're looking at the March, but what I can do is a brief, it might be, as everyone can get on site, I'm certainly councillors in Farnham have been arranged to do a tour, but I can bring some images and see where we are, because I know we'll be much more certain of it.
I mean, the only alternative is to have, if we want to look at the more performance side of things, we do that at the back end of the year, perhaps. I'm just thinking, if you've got two scrutiny reviews to look at and the stuff on, um.
And you were talking about PFP is coming as well, weren't you?
Yeah, it might be a quite busy agenda. And I know I said that the coordinate, what I wanted to limit it to, three or four.
What I'll perhaps do then, I can, I can bring just a report on the Memorial boards and pictures, so I want your presentation, but it's there for questions after, perhaps.
And my final part, members will be at this meeting, um, this will be a chance for you to kind of feed into the forward programme. Um, or just please do drop me an email because this is yours um, to keep. So please do look at the terms of reference for the committee and I would draw your attention to the wider aspect of what we're doing in scrutiny, which is the wider health and wellbeing stream, so talks again about dementia, loneliness, mental health. All of these things fall under our committee.
Hmm.
So if you've got any ideas, please do email me and I'm happy to talk you through kind of what you think, maybe we can put it into a proposal to put on the program.
There's quite a lot of priority items in the books, there is, aren't there?
Yeah. Um, I guess that's probably because there isn't a median, it seems a little bit high, so by default, a lot of them go.
Okay. Right, well, so.
I, I just have a request for your forward programme, Alex.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like um, the stroke service relocation to come forward together with the ambulance service.
Yeah, we can, I can look into that and if it's appropriate, we can possibly schedule a virtual update at the next meeting. So it has, you are right, it should have been put on the, um, in one of our meetings or sooner than currently is.
Don't, don't worry, as long as it comes forward, that's good, thank you.
There's something Jenny Els is particularly concerned about.
Yes, yes, yes. It's the villagers.
It's the villagers.
Maybe I've got some figures to say what's actually happening there. Because they didn't change, how long ago was that changed, is that six months or so ago?
Was it September? Well, it was September, it was autumn last, last year, yes.
I've got some data on how it's actually going.
Can I just say that we have the column that's the subjects? And our four priorities, of course, customer services and POs. I would find it useful if there was a classification against each of these subjects, whether it was customer service or environmental. And I appreciate that, you know, a particular subject could be more than one. But you can give an immediate view as to whether we're doing a balanced approach in what we're tackling earlier rather than later and this sort of.
Yeah, but I do look into, I'll see how it looks on the paper. I originally didn't put that in because I thought it might create too many columns, but I can understand your point. I guess the only hesitation is it may just be a long list of community wellbeing, community wellbeing, community wellbeing within this particular committee. But some of our other committees certainly look at a lot of the areas that Kelvin covers, for example. But for example, but Environment Committee, theirs is explicitly all environment, as is ours mainly community wellbeing. But yeah, we can certainly have a look and explore that and see what it would look like on the paper.
Actually, Mr. Chen, would it just not merely go as a description underneath perhaps the aim of it? And then you don't need a column, you just tug it where it belongs.
Yes.
Fit on my screen. Exactly.
Because I can imagine that on this first page, we've got four very high priorities. But I'm just hypothesising that the actual four subjects could be all down to say, um, community wellbeing. And we might be letting your attention as a high priority to the other priorities.
Sure, okay, well, yeah, I'll look into it.
Right. Any other points I need to do? We've run over a bit, but not too bad. We had a bit of a delay.
It's unfinished, hasn't it?
I think we finished, right?
Oh, well done. How nice.
We haven't done too bad.
No, well done.